Wise Dean and the Dean. Welcome to the Town Hall Student Meeting of the School of Sciences and Humanities. My name is Marjan Janusbiakova and I will be your host for today's meeting. The main purpose of today's Town Hall meeting is to discuss your study and learning experience during Spring 2021 semester. During this meeting, you are welcome to address your thoughts, questions, and suggestions about online studying directly to the Dean, Wise Dean, Department Chairs, and the Program Directors. Once you're willing to ask questions, please raise your hand and you can announce your questions to the audience. The other option is to type your question to the question and answer chart located at the bottom of your screen. And our Department Chairs, Wise Dean, and the Dean will be glad to reply to your questions. And now let me introduce the participants of today's panel discussion. Daniel Pugh, Dean of School of Science and Humanities. Philip Enz, Wise Dean of Academic Affairs. Chester Jablonski, Associate Provost for Graduate Studies. Alexei Trochev, Chair of Political Sciences and International Relations, Department Undergraduate Program Director, Associate Professor. Julia Secher, Acting Chair of Economics Department, Professor. Ziegfried van Dufel, Chair of History, Philosophy, and Religious Studies Department, Associate Professor. Vasily Paunov, Chair of Chemistry Department, Professor. Christian Schoenbach, Chair of Biological Science Department, Professor. Anton Desatnikov, Chair of Physics Department, Professor. Dong Ming Wei, Chair of Mathematics Department, Professor. Ulay Shamileglu, Chair of Department of Kazakh Language and Turkish Studies, PhD in Eurasian Studies Program Director, Professor. Keri Pichinsky, Director of Writing Center. Karas Shenk, Political Science and International Relations Graduate Program Director, Associate Professor. Julia Davila, Economics Graduate Program Director, Professor. Sevalot Pishkov, Chemistry Graduate Program Director, Assistant Professor. Ferdinand Molnar, Biological Science and Technology graduate program director, Associate Professor. Yernazar Abdikamalov, Physics Graduate Program Director, Associate Professor. Alexandra Javier Castro Castilla, Applied Mathematics Graduate Program Director, Assistant Professor. Nikolai Tsarampilov, Eurasian Studies Graduate Program Director, Associate Professor. Surogan Durvud Khan, Mathematics PhD Program Director, Associate Professor. Alexander Tikhanov, Physics PhD Program Director, Associate Professor. Ashad Bixanov, Director of Students Affairs Department. Kasim Khan Nur Muhammedov, Senior Manager for Student Affairs. So before the start of today's panel session, I would like to give a further speech to Daniel Pugh, Dean of School of Sciences and Humanities.
Great, thank you, Marjan, very much. I greatly appreciate your help and it's great to see you here again. And again, thanks to all of my colleagues who have come this evening and to Maya, Sam, Sel, and Aminia for setting this up. So students, thanks to you especially for taking time out. I know you've all had long days, probably some of you in classes all day, some of you working on research all day, and a few of you even managed to get into the labs today. And the last thing you need is two more hours or an hour on a Zoom call. But we really wanted to give you the opportunity to talk to us directly as a group. I hope you're in regular contact with your Program Directors and your advisors and all of your professors. And if you're not, do get in touch with them. They want to hear from you. But this is a chance for me to hear from you as well and for all of the programs to sort of hear what's happening. So thank you for giving us that time. I want to congratulate you on finishing the Fall Semester of 2021. And this really goes beyond the usual congratulations we give students at the end of a semester. I really think, you know, it was an exceptional semester and it was difficult. And that's true for really everyone in the world. But I think especially all of you who are trying in some cases just to start your graduate studies, in other cases, you're right at the end. It was a hard semester for everyone. I won't make any bones about that. And I think that everyone deserves congratulations really just for having gotten through. And I'm actually, I'm proud of everybody here, both the faculty and the students and the administrative staff, and Marjan, for having not just gotten through last semester, but having really thrived. It's, to be honest, we went into the semester thinking, given the level of disruption, given the pandemic and the unpredictability, you know, we kind of went into the semester worried about whether we would really even be able to pull it off. But what I saw was some problems, right? There definitely were some things we can do better and some things that got in the way. But I saw everyone in their classes, I saw the classes finishing. From what I could see, they were excellent as always. I know that the learning experience was not as good in most cases as usual. But I think that the professors really went above and beyond in making sure that they could do as much for you as possible. I saw the students at all levels really doing everything they possibly could to learn during this period. And I know for a lot of you that it was really extreme with the laboratory disruptions. And I saw a lot of research continuing. So I'm really proud of what's happened in the last semester. I hope we never have to do it again. It's not something that I enjoy. But the fact that we got through as well as we did is something that we should, we should all be really happy about. And it's a good example of the kind of resilience that we look for in our students in the VUCA world. And I also think it's something you're going to look back on for the rest of your careers when something bad happens. And you're going to think, well, you know what? I managed to finish my doctoral research. I managed to start my master's study during a pandemic when we all had to work from a distance. I can get through this. So hopefully that's what'll make you stronger. The new semester, 2021 Spring, we're three weeks into it now and it's moving along. And so far, I'm really excited about it. I see, I can see evidence that everyone has learned a lot from the online learning experience. I think the classes are even better. I hope our systems are a little bit better. And I know our students are learning to adapt as well as they can to a really difficult situation. And I have no doubt it's going to be a hard semester. I don't, I don't want anyone to think that I'm here to sing a happy song and pretend. It's going to be a really hard semester again. But I'm optimistic about it because there's a lot of positive signs. One positive, very positive thing, we've managed to get some students back into the labs. We got permission this year, this semester, to have all of the first years graduate students with, who need lab access, to have permission. We are in a restricted phase right now because we're in a red zone, which means that that is dialed back a little bit. But this semester, I do believe we're going to have a lot more research happening in labs than we did last semester, which is certainly good for everyone. The DSA Department of Student Affairs is working on opening some co-working spaces around the country so that those of you who are here or not, even not in Nuslaton, will be able to have spaces to work if you're not a lab scientist. And I think that will be a big improvement. And obviously, the most important light at the end of the tunnel right now is the vaccine situation. The vaccines are being distributed around the world. And even here in Kazakhstan, we are expecting vaccines to be distributed starting as early as Monday. And if there's, if there's anything we can hope for, it's that that goes well and that it has the effect we want. University people, including students and faculty, are in the second priority group in Kazakhstan, which means that everyone in this call could be receiving a dose of the vaccine as early as March 1st if things go well. That's, that's super exciting because getting those distributed and then seeing them have a positive effect is what it's going to take to get everyone back to the classrooms, the libraries, the labs, the archives, their business trips, hanging out in cafes and talking about the stuff you're studying and doing all the things that you really should be doing. I'd exercise some caution. It's not as if as soon as you get a shot of that vaccine, everything goes back to normal. It's going to take a couple of months for us to see how effective they are to get a good population vaccinated. But the indication is that we could be, we could be going back to in-person classes in the summer and fall. Really, I think we're putting our priority effort into making sure that fall will be as excellent as possible. But we do hope that we can start some of this in the summer. There is no date set. You're going to ask me six times tonight. I got asked about 16 times last night by the undergraduates, what exactly is the date that we're all going back to the university? And the answer is going to be the same every time somebody asks it. We don't know. I can tell you, and Chet is here from the Office of the Provost. He might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but the discussions that are happening are including a hope, no plans, but a hope that we could have in-person graduation this year. And so that should give you a timeline for when it's realistic to start thinking about this. Graduation happens in the first week of June. And if we can get people sufficiently vaccinated and if that goes well, we could be seeing a real return then. If things really clear up ahead of that, we might even be able to start staging a few more groups with access, which would be, I think, also really great. All that said, we have a lot, a lot to get through before we can get to that. There were over 1,300 new cases of COVID-19 reported yesterday in Kazakhstan, which is a huge increase over the previous days and weeks. We are in an upward trajectory. The Ministry of Health is warning us that we need to be prepared for going into a new wave. They're telling us that this new wave could continue growing until March. We could be looking at as many as twice or even three times as many daily cases as we have right now. And if that continues, you know, again, so that expectations are managed, the restrictions will probably get tighter. If we, if we're at 3,000 cases per day, we might end up back in a situation like we were in June and July, well, I guess April and May, when we were, we were completely locked out of the campus. So keep that in mind. We will be operating based on the conditions as they change. But I do hope that it's going in the right direction. Yeah, so tonight, we're going to, we're going to give you a chance to ask, answer your questions. I want to, before we go into it, just again, to manage expectations, we don't know the answers to a lot of your questions. And the question, the answers that we do have, the answers that we do have will be a mix of good answers, happy, satisfying answers, and answers that you don't want to hear because it's not a great situation. So I can't promise you that you'll leave really thrilled tonight and I can't promise you that I can answer everything. But I can promise that we'll be as honest as we can and that we'll follow up on the questions that we don't know the answers to. I know that the Provost's Office and the President, I believe, are planning to have a follow-up conversation with graduate students to answer university-level issues next week or the week after. So you'll, you'll get another chance to work on that. So I have a few, a few of the questions that I've already received. I'll go ahead and address before we get in, but I'm sure more things will come up. Again, the big, the big question is, when is, is life returning to normal? When are we going back in the labs? When are the non-lab students going back to the library? When are more students back in the dorms? And the answer is, as soon as we can do it safely. We really, we believe that the, so far, the really strict situation on campus has helped to prevent Nazar Bayev University, at least the campus, from suffering as badly as so many other places in the country and the world. The number of cases on campus has been really low and that is going to continue to be our priority. And I think we have the students who need access to the labs on the list now, so hopefully we can do that. DSA is working on access to other spaces. And I believe we've opened up now access to the library for PhD students, which is really great. Although, again, during the red zone, we have to dial that back a little bit. Otherwise, the questions that I'm hearing from students. There, there's a question mostly coming from undergraduates about the academic calendar. There is an extra day at the end of this semester that's been added to the calendar to allow students more time to study before finals. I think for most of you, that will be less important than the undergraduates. The, yeah, graduation, for those of you heading to graduation, I'm getting questions about that. We're hoping to be able to do something in person. It's not clear if it'll happen. If it does, we're probably going to need people to be vaccinated before they, they come to that. So if you're, you're thinking about doing graduation and you're thinking about whether or not you want to vaccinate, those two questions might go together, although there's no, no definite answers on any of those yet. And then. For those of you who are not able to finish because of the disruptions, and I suspect this will affect several of you. If you're not able to finish your research project because you couldn't get into the lab or you couldn't do fieldwork, if you're not able to finish a class this, this semester and you're scheduled to graduate, we will be working with you case by case. I can tell you that in, in last spring, a year ago, the students who were disrupted and not able to graduate on time in June because of the disruption starting in March, for those students, we worked with them. We allowed them to continue. Most of those students now have finished. They were given time. They were given the resources, lab access if they needed it. And those who were able to take advantage of that have graduated. So if you're in a case where that's happening, we'll work with you. Nobody's going to be, you know, we're all going through this. We all know what's happened. We're not going to tell you, you can't graduate. Why didn't you get your work done in 2020 and 2021? If there is another reason, if you were not attending Zoom classes or if you are not doing assignments that you needed to be doing that you reasonably could be, it might be a different story, but we're committed to working with you. And those are, I think, the main questions that I've seen from, from the graduate students so far. So we'll take more in the Q and A. And before we do that, I do want to offer Professor Jablonski the opportunity to say anything. Did you want to say hi or anything?
Yes, thanks, Dan, and welcome to all the graduate students here. Basically, to come to hear what, how things are going in your world. And like Dan says, we are aware of the issues and how hard it is. I wanted to assure students who are extending their programs that there actually is policy, you know, you actually have to apply for extension at the graduate level. But we are looking at these in the current frame of reference. It's not enough just to put COVID, please extend the, you have to write some reasons and rationale down. But we've been very understanding with those extensions. And as far as I know, we are not planning to assess any fees for the graduate extensions at least this semester. I think that's coming in future, but not for next semester. I'm also interested for any of you who are involved in the GTA scheme, how that is going, how that's working for you, how you think you're helping your, your student charges. So if you've got anything to say about that or comments, I'd be very happy to hear. Lastly, I have an update planned with the Provost for you next week, particularly the PhD students, because there's the all-important question of support. We have this, I think, finally ironed out with Managing Council. We met this week. We have a decision and by the look of it, you've all received the recent increase in PhD stipend. And we're going to continue with the current stipend that we had in place up to this semester. So everything will stay with you. That's the latest news that I have. So I'll pass it back to Dan now and to the students for questions.
Great, Chet, actually, before we do that, I'm sorry, I started to interrupt you earlier. You said that if they, if they need that extension, they need to apply for it. Can you tell us, should they contact their advisor or maybe our student support office for that or you?
You know, they should sit down with their advisor and basically plan out an academic strategy to finish in the semester. You know, I'm going to, if I'm a PhD student, I'm going to submit chapters one through three on these dates, the rest of that on another date. I plan to get my first draft submitted on, you know, this date. I'm hoping to defend on this date and move on. That's kind of what we're looking for. And we want the students to sit down with their advisors, their supervisors, and talk this through because both of you need to help together to plan that out. Don't push this on the administrative staff of the school. This is on your shoulders. It's your responsibility to get it done and to write us a reasonable, thoughtful plan that'll help you get through. The form, there's a form available. It's in the Registrar's Office on the My Registrar website. You can get it from there.
Great, thank you, Chet.
Thank you, dear professors. Now let's move on to our panel session. One more time, dear students, please raise your hand or type question on question and answer chart. So we are waiting for questions from students.
While we're waiting, do any of our colleagues on the panel have anything you'd like to, to address to the students as a group? No. Oh, Dongming, I see your hands up, Dongming. Go ahead. No?
No, I already, no, I don't have a question.
Okay, okay, thanks. Okay. Well, this could be, could be very straightforward then. So is everybody having access to Zoom and you're, you're getting in touch with your, your professors? And you're, you're able to communicate with who you need to? Yeah.
Today's students are very silent. They don't have any questions.
The walls here.
Let me say, one of the questions that I have heard a little bit from students directly, although it wasn't submitted for this, was about travel. I think this is, you know, for the lab scientists, the real issue is getting in the labs. And for, for everybody, including the lab scientists, travel is critical, especially for those of you who need to do archive research or, or fieldwork or something, not to mention conference travel. And as you have surmised, because you're all very smart or else you wouldn't be graduate students in Nazar Bayev University. You know, the, the return to travel is up in the air. We'll be able to return to it when the, the travel situation is safe. The decision is being made on the basis right now of what we're hearing about the safety of travel and the safety of working in places around the country and around the world. My, my personal guess, and this is not an official university position, my, my guess as a person, is that this summer, we, we might be able to return to some limited travel. But I think even in the summer, it's going to be limited because, as you can see, the airlines are still pretty tight. There just simply aren't a lot of ability. And the airlines are requiring PCR tests. Probably soon they'll be requiring vaccine certificates, things like that to travel. So I'm very, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to see students, at least within the country or the region, doing some travel this summer if they need to go to archives or fieldwork. But I do want to encourage you, if you're still designing your research project, really think hard about whether there's a way that you can do it without that travel. If your, your research project involves, you know, traveling to every library in the country and working in close proximity with people, it's going to be pretty tough to pull off. If it involves a lot of international travel, it's going to be extremely tough. So if there's a way that you can use a data set that's existing, that you can explore online communities, you'll, you'll be buying yourself some, some peace of mind with that. And Ulay, I see you've got your hand up.
I just wanted to follow up on that point. I agree with you completely. So right now, we currently have two, our second cohort, our second-year students, the first cohort of PhD in Eurasian Studies students. And of the four, with two of them, we completely redesigned their projects so that it's not bound up in having to travel to, to archives. With one of them, he was going to be studying theatrical performance in Dushanbe in Tajikistan. I don't think that's going to happen, but we were able to shift to another exciting topic that was based more on published literature and sources and memoirs. With another one of the students, he was going to be working originally in archives and other parts of Kazakhstan and in Russia, et cetera. And now he's shifted his topic too, and it makes sense that the archives he would need would be in Nur Sultan and Almatya. And I, and I agree with you completely that I think that anybody who plans on doing a dissertation or a master's thesis that is relying exclusively on field or archival research in summer 2021 is putting him or herself at great risk. And for, you know, depending on the schedule of the rollout of a vaccine and so on and what the situation is on the ground, even summer 2021, not just summer 2021, but it's even possible that summer 2022 could be problematic.
I think that's a good point. I think the, we're hoping that the vaccines will be effective. And I'm speaking largely in best-case scenarios tonight. But with the emergence of new strains of the virus and with a lot of uncertainty about how well the vaccination system will work, how quickly it can be distributed, and how long it will take to, to get enough people vaccinated to make a difference. It could be longer. We, we will be moving as fast as we can. One thing that I think doesn't often come across in our messages to students at all levels is that we in the faculty and the administration really, really hate this. None of us is happy about these restrictions. We would all love to open the doors to the atrium and to go back. I personally haven't been in my office. I think I've been in there three times since March. So I'm sitting in the same chair I sit in all day, every day. And when I get done, I'll move my laptop over and I'll eat my dinner in the same chair. And then I'll work a little more and then I'll go to sleep. And that's sort of my life. And I'm sure that sounds familiar to most of you. And so we, we would love to do that. More importantly, the, the research has slowed down and our, our time with you has slowed down. So we are eager. And you should know that your, your professors are advocating very strongly on your behalf. And your program directors are regularly letting me know what's not working and very, very strongly pushing to, to get the situation improved for you. So we really do, we will be making this work as soon as we can. It's not that we enjoy this. And on that note, I'd say, your, your professors and your program directors are extremely strong advocates. So if you're struggling with something, let them know. I regularly get notes from students who say they're, they're going to withdraw from the university because they're having a problem. And if you send me one of those notes, the, my first response is going to be, have you talked to your advisor? Have you talked to your program director? And occasionally, we, I find a student who hasn't. And they say, well, I didn't, I didn't think I should bother that person. Yeah, you should bother them. They get paid very well to listen to you, bring your concerns to them. So please, please do, because we all, we want you to succeed.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. I would like to ask other professors if you have any additional thoughts or comments on this topic.
Professor Bowen, I see your hands. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. On the question of research travel. So I have an MA student right now who was initially planning to do some archival research in Moscow, but due to travel restrictions, couldn't get to Russia. But through his external advisor, we were able to find another researcher who currently lives in Moscow and was able to go to some libraries and archives and obtain some of the documents that he really needed for his research. And it was like a great help. And we were actually able to get funding. And I'm wondering, is there, is there going to be more of this available? Maybe for students who can't travel but have a way of getting documents if they can get in touch with other grad students in other countries or people who are just there? Is there, is there a way to kind of make that process easier?
Can I, can I add something to what Elliot said? I just want to clarify that. The funding for, for Elliot's students came from the generous donations of the, our program's committee members. So it was actually private funds. We don't have anything else, unfortunately, so far to, to, to help our students who want to secure getting the materials, yeah.
What we, the, the one thing that I could see as an obvious resource for that would be if a faculty member who's working with a student has a grant. We, we usually are very restrictive about hiring RAs who are not physically at Nazar Bayev University. We, we usually are very restrictive about hiring RAs who are not physically at Nazarbayev University. But if a strong case can be made to get research materials that are part of a faculty member's research as part of the grant. That's certainly something I'm willing to advocate through the provost's office where we need to for the approval. Chet, are you aware of any other resources?
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good resource, and there have been numerous cases, maybe, but several cases where travel funding that was allocated in the grant has been reassigned for various other purposes. Many towards RA funding. So the provost is receptive to those arguments. Against the backdrop of, you know, the usual cautions about funding off-campus researchers, which is still, of course, an issue.
We've, I would say, we are, it doesn't feel like it to most people, but we are being uncharacteristically flexible right now. We're getting a lot of approvals for, for waivers and exceptions and not clucinias that we don't normally get. I'm still saying no to things every day and people are very frustrated. But the provost's office and even the finance department are aware of what we're going through and they've, they've tried as much as they can, I think, to help us. I guess on that note, what I would say actually is, if you're thinking creatively and you're all creative, again, or you wouldn't be Nazarbayev University graduate students. If you come up with a creative solution like the one that, that it sounds like Nicolai and his colleagues came up with. Or what Elliot is talking about, do bring it to us because we will consider it. And at least give it our best shot before we say no, and hopefully we'll even say yes. Yuli, is your hand up again?
Yes. My immediate concern is the first cohort students in the second year, but we also have a first cohort, first year, I keep getting confused. We have our year one students as well. And I think some of them are more oriented in the social sciences. And that's also true for two of the second-year students. And I think for those students who need to have fieldwork for the purpose of interviews, for example, and asking questions, I think they're trying very hard to try to figure out how to do that remotely by Zoom, through email, through telephone conversations and so on. So, I mean, I'm not a social scientist. I'm much more on the humanities side. So I just thought that if that was something that people wanted to discuss more about strategies for how to not just get materials that are available in an archive to which you can't travel, but how can you get in touch with people to answer questions for your surveys if they're in Nur Sultan or if they're in Almatya or if they're in Korea or somewhere else? Yeah, I think that's the productive discussion that one can have too.
Thank you. And I will say one caution on that. If you do change your, your data collection method, if you're doing human subjects research, please don't forget the IRECK. If you change from in-person questions to online, we actually have to re-review the, the ethics protocol on that. Usually, it's an expedited, very, very simple process, but we just finished one at the faculty level for somebody who had to shift to online data gathering, and it was, it was very simple, but it's necessary.
Thank you, Dr. Pue. Any other additional thoughts or comments? We're waiting still for questions.
No? I guess everyone's working too hard. They're so focused on getting their, their notes done and then making sure their experiments are happening that they're not worried about anything else that's good.
Yes, probably. Or master's students and PhD students, they are experienced students. They don't have any questions.
That's right. And I know, I know a lot of you have been bringing your questions already proactively, so this may be redundant for you. So please do keep doing that. Well, in that case.
Thoughts or comments? If you want to add something about the current situation? So please, Professor.
Well, I, I'm going to make an executive decision, as is my prerogative, and say that it sounds like most of the, the sort of public questions that we need to address have been addressed here. So I will go ahead and say to all of our dear students. Thank you for taking this time. I hope that you learned something or at least got to have a sense of contact tonight. This is absolutely not the end of the conversation. If anything comes up or if you want to follow up, really don't hesitate to contact us. Always start with your advisor, your professor, and then your program director and your chair. But if you're not satisfied with the answers you're getting from them, you can come to me directly. You can contact Professor Jablonski directly. We are busy, so we're not always fast on our emails, but we are here to help if you need it. Okay, so thank you. And thanks also to all of my colleagues for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Professor. Thank you, dear professors and teaching staff for participating in today's session. Nazarbayev University is a very good place for personal growth, for building knowledge. And I wish you all patience and keep doing, keep going. So this is the end of today's meeting. I hope there will not be any questions because we didn't get any questions for today. PhD and master's students seem to be very experienced and they know and they cope with the studying process very well. And I wish you good luck and success in spring semester 2021.
Thank you, Marzon.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.